All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order and ask Mrs. Nash to take the role, please.
Ms. Earring?
Here.
Ms. Bowlen? Ms. Bowlen, here. Dr. Flowers?
Present.
Mr. Leary? Ms. Winslow, here. Dr. Powers?
Here.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mrs. Nash.
You're welcome.
So, this is gonna be run pretty informally. I'll give everybody a chance to say. If anyone in the audience has questions, I will ask if you can write them down on the back on an index card. Hand them to me, I'll read you question hour. So, the first thing I'm gonna do is I'll just let everybody introduce themselves, starting down there with Senator DePalma. Do you guys want to give a few minutes, too, just to introduce yourselves?
I was gonna say, I'll vamp for Lou.
Sorry about that, Lou.
Lou DePalma, State Senator for District 12, Middletown, Little Convent, Newport. Obviously, about several topics. Just started my 17th year in the Senate. I served on Finance, chaired Finance Committee. I served on Education, where I've been at both Senate Finance and Education for 17 years. And just got appointed to the, I'm also excited about the Artificial Intelligence and Verdi Technologies Committee. My background from around a long, 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 long time ago was during the second generation of artificial intelligence. These were scary, but they're exciting now. Good to be here. We'll move back to you.
Yeah, thank you. Rob wants to welcome us, I think, to the Nactic Films.
Yeah, so, good morning, everybody. Thanks for coming. I do wanna welcome everyone here. I'm Robert Young. I'm the Director of Operations here in Newport Schools. And the Career and Tech Center is one of my responsibilities. So, we are in, we're all, you know, kinda being housed in the Newport area Career and Tech Center. So, just a little bit about the Center. Ironically, this is CTE Month, February 1st is the start of CTE Month. So, great way to start it off by, you know, spending some time in the Center. Some highlights that are kinda going on in the programs here, so I'll just touch on a few. So, automotive, we just received a, we're building an electric go-kart. So, they're gonna put it together. It's gonna be all-electric, so the students start to learn about the, you know, the new EV programs. And then, in late May, they're gonna go with, I think, six or eight other schools. And they're gonna go to a track, and they're actually gonna race the events today. So, culinary, where, you know, we had the scones and the cookies. And Ms. Kenny just happened to walk in at the same time. But they're starting, they have a pro start competition at the end of this month, where I know some of you will be invited up to, to the hotel, hotel, keep changing its name. But it's in Warwick, but they have a really, they have a strong Crown Plaza. Yep, where they have a competition against, you know, six or eight other schools. It's a really intense competition. By, I mean, like, as soon as the bus shows up, or the truck that has the food, they, they run out, they grab the coolers, they open up, they check the temperature, see how it's wrapped. And right from there, they drag them in, the teachers can't go anywhere near their students, and then they, you know, prepare their meals. They have to have a price point, they have to talk about the recipes, and then they get evaluated. Last year, we came in second place again. We lost to Job Corps, which is, you know, they're 22, 21-year-old. But, but we hang in there, so I kinda call us, like, we're like the public school champs. So, there's a lot going on cybersecurity-wise, so we're in that Cyber Patriot piece. And that's, you know, over, overwhelmingly, it's run by the Air Force. And so, they do have small other competitions regular in the particular schools. So, we have a, our JROTC puts a cyber team together. And I don't know if they're gonna let us compete anymore, because we have not lost yet. So, we're the platinum champions again. So, it's almost like an annual school committee agenda item to bring them up there to recognize, you know, how well they do. But they won platinum, like, we're running out of trophy space for the ROTC program. So, we're really proud of the fact, you know, our students are able to do, you know, they're in our ROTC program, they're in our IT program, do a lot of good things. So, like I said, welcome here, a lot going on. And then, March is Skills USA Month. So, our students will compete, come on in. Yes, our students will compete, each of our programs will compete in their particular event in the state. And if they win the state, we send them to Atlanta, Georgia, where they'll compete nationally. You see up here, right before COVID, Skills USA Commercial Baking is one of, one of our culinary students. Won that one, the state champion, she came in third in the country. And now, I'm just finding out, she's in France right now, working, you know, as a baker in France. So, it's awesome, great time. It's kinda like their Super Bowl. So, you know, all the varsity sports have their championship at certain times of the year. This is our CTE kinda competition for the, for the state. So, a lot going on in the building. Our applications for next year are just a little bit higher than they were in the past, which I was a little surprised, because, as you know, like, student population throughout the island is dropping. But our interest in our programs are as high, or if not higher, than ever, than they have ever been in the past. So, we're excited, looking forward to, you know, another great year, and welcome, everybody. Thank you. Oh, yes, and we have our student, our ad design program over here was kinda recording and getting her, her kinda, she volunteered, getting her feet wet. And then, I was telling her, enjoy it, because it's one of the few times that, you know, no matter what, I guess, rank or role we have as adults, the person with the headset is always in charge. We thank her and Mr. Connell for coming here, who's been a huge part of, and I think everybody in, you know, in the room has at least reached out to him for some type of either flyer, a jacket. And he's making the shirts that he has over there. He does, does more than, well, than enough for the program. So, super excited to have him here, but we do thank for coming out and doing the record. So, he's gonna record that, they'll upload it, and then we'll be able to put it on YouTube or somewhere like that for a while. Thank you, and welcome this morning.
Robert, thank you very much, appreciate it. So, we'll just pick up who we love off the board.
Thanks, Rob, and thanks to the staff and the students for volunteering to come in on a Saturday. So, I know that, and I'm really glad that it's gonna be recorded. I think that's one of the conversations we learned, especially during COVID. I've heard so many times from folks who listen or watch at home, even if they can't watch live. So, I'm glad that that's able to happen today, 'cause I think it's so important. So, Senator Don Oyer, I've been in the Senate since 2017. I served on the Judiciary Committee, the Special, Special Legislation and Veterans Affairs, and then Rules on Government Ethics and Oversight. So, I have, for the past few years, been putting in legislation around the School Funding Formula, recognizing that, you know, the school serves a lot of folks who are low-income, and that comes with additional challenges. I'm supportive of the free and reduced school lunch, universal for lunch and breakfast, because if kids are hungry, they're not focused on learning. I would really love for us to think about that, just as the same way as we provide textbooks. But I think it's just a critical need for the kids to have, and for us to do everything we can to be able to set up opportunity for all the kids of all the different skills, abilities, and backgrounds to thrive in our schools. So, I also have been really concerned. I know that there is a lot of conversation. I'm glad we're talking today about the immigration concern. I've heard a lot of that from families and from community members about the impact that that might have on our schools. And I also just want to give a shout-out again to the teachers and the staff here, because I know how much you all do to help our families and help the kids succeed. So, look forward to continuing discussion today.
Lauren, my name's Lauren Carson. I'm State Representative for the Great Sea of Newport, which is what I always say. I'm 275, and I live about one block from here. I probably could've rolled out of bed and rolled into the room. I'm currently serving my second term. I serve as a Deputy Majority Leader. I serve on the Oversight Committee, where I also chair a subcommittee on Art, Recreation, and Tourism. I also serve on the House Internet, Internet Committee, which is commenting that he's on the Senate Committee. I'm a Vice Chair of that committee. It's Internet and broadband. I'm also a Vice Chair of the Environment Committee. And I've been on small business for about 10 years, whole time I'm there. I have a Master's in Business, and I've always enjoyed small business. There's a couple bills that I have that I think are gonna impact schools this year. The first one is a debate of putting it in, in light of the FDA decision several weeks ago about food dye. But I put it in anyway, and that is to take food dye out of cafeteria food, all foods in schools. Snacks, drinks, sodas, whatever kids are drinking, I wasn't gonna say it, but whatever they're eating. So, I don't know where that bill will go, but I think it's time to talk about food dye. There, in red dye 40, there's actually petroleum. So, if kids are eating stuff with red dyes, it's largely in candies and things like that, which I'm sure we don't serve. I think it's just raise awareness of what kids are eating, so I did put that bill in. I'm also try, I'm also looping back to two other bills that are on the books that, in my opinion, have not been adequately enforced. The first one is that I learned about four years ago that Connecticut was restricting the use of pesticides on school properties. And I found that in Rhode Island, we had a law on the books since 2001, which required the Department of Health and Environmental Management to set up a task force to make recommendations to school districts on using alternatives to pesticides. And when I called them, they said they never did it. So, I don't think we should pass laws that don't get enforced. So, I'm looping back on that bill to really get some, get that law enforced. The other thing that I'm looping back on is a bill that I passed about five years ago about waste management in schools. I know that you've done a lot of work in town on this, I'm pretty aware of it. But there are school districts that are not in compliance with composting and recycling. And we can talk about that in detail. I know there's some people in the room that work on that. So, I'm about enforcing those two laws.
She's done. That's what she does during the assembly. I'm done. My name is Marvin Adley, and I'm so glad to be back in the Rogers High School area here. All of my kids went to school here, and they're out in the world doing different things now. I taught here for a few short months when I first retired and returned back to Newport. But education, beyond a doubt, is one of the most important things, I think, we can do for our kids, because there's no blueprint to what happens in the world. But there are blueprints that we learn here, you know, how to get along with each other, what's important. The lessons that we do, the, you know, the camera read, that we, all of that makes a difference when you get out in the real world. So, education has been one of those things that has allowed me and almost everybody in my family to be places that we normally would not be. But, so, for this, I have to always start off with, there's nothing better than having a group of people get together to talk about some very difficult things. But I think there has to be some parameters put on that, so that when one wants to leave or get to talking, we're all on the same tune and music. I've been elected, I can't remember when, right, just, I think, the year before.
Two years.
Yeah, two years before you did, Laura. And we've worked together in Newport, started with John, who lived, used to, I think he still lives about a street more actually than. Good, yeah, and then my good friend Lou. So, we have a good, we have a good delegation. But I think what we have to do is learn to hone in what we really want. You know, I hear people say upstate, or the state. I heard it last night for half an hour. And really, we're legislators, and we are the ones that, as, you know, John Lawrence said, we do the bills and that sort of thing. But the state itself, we have a state government that governs things like education and all those sorts of things. So, what we have to learn to do is to pull those levers to make that work. My job, my specific job is Chairman of the House Finance Committee. And we're charged with taking the governor's budget, which he has, you know, so graciously given us over the last couple of weeks or so, and take it apart and see what's in it, and try to make the numbers fit. And I don't have to tell anybody sitting in this room that there is an issue that's coming really loud and clear with money from the budget. So, it means that there's not gonna be a lot of free-floating money around as people thought it was gonna be this year. So, we have to be very strategic in what we ask for. And the position that, at least I can speak for myself, but I think the other three legislators who are here would think the same thing, that we, we have to pick those things that we think are important and work on those, because you're not gonna get everything you want, you know. It's just not, it, there's just not enough money to do that. But it doesn't hurt to ask for it and then work on it in the right way. So, from my perspective, if Marvin knows what it is we really need, not necessarily what we really want, but what we really need, then with the rest of the crew, we can try and work to see what we can do. Because there, there, there will be a shortage of free-flowing money this year. That's not bad, but it's not like we have hundreds of millions of dollars to give to this one-handed town. So, I spent, you know, all my nights, you know, looking at these, these bunch of books and things of that sort. And I hope that in these conversations, you realize, at least, I can't give you numbers yet, because we have not had, now, one hearing. And we will start that next week, I believe, where we have taken the governor's budget, you know, put it into little pieces, and then the 16 members of my committee get a chance to, to see what's in that and see what's on it. From that part on, then we'll have some idea about what the numbers are. But at this point, we just don't know. So, I wouldn't, I'm not gonna mention any numbers or anything like that, because I'm the kinda person, I'll just tell you straight up, yeah, we can, no, we can't, let's work on it. But I don't want you leaving here thinking that, you know, that there's free-flowing stuff right here. So, I hope the conversation is great. I'm here to learn. I don't know, I'm trying to think. I know we're going to the City Council.
We're done.
Oh, I just wasn't invited. I know.
They're not bringing any money, so what?
Just, just a quick question. When, when are your bills due? When, when can, what is the deadline?
For us, it will be a week from Thursday, generally. And then, usually, it's extended until the.
A week from the sixth, so the 13th?
And traditionally, the Speaker will give us until the last Tuesday in February. They're, he just, he sort of extends that rule a little bit. So, that, I think, is the 25th of February. There are different types of bills that we can introduce right up until the last minute. There are municipal bills with the resolution, there are wedding ceremony resolutions, there are a few other types. But the, and for the House, after February 25th, we have the option to present three more bills.
On anything?
On anything. It's a little complicated, but, thank you.
We don't have the same latitude, and we'll run it, so we'll have the deadline and probably the extended deadline as well, we'll have it in the Senate.
End of February, 25th or whatever.
We don't have the three acts.
Right, you don't get the goodie bag.
Well, we have 12 discussion items to go through, and these will come up by Beth Colen and Bob Powell, who are on the Slaver VAs on the committee.
So, if, if we wanna put a bill in, there's a process for getting it written. So, even though we may have until the 25th of February, it's gotta be in the hands of the attorneys that write bills, like, you know, by the 10th or 12th, so just an FYI. Takes a few steps there to get it through the system.
I also wanted to add one more thing that I forgot to mention, which is, before we get to the hard stuff, back to the celebrations. There's so many good things that come out of Newport schools, and I think that that gets forgotten a lot. We all love to welcome folks from our community up to the House Chamber and the Senate Chamber to, like, recognize accomplishments that have been made. So, when the school, when the city, when the, when the students are doing stuff, getting recognized, things like that, we're always happy to host them. We'll do a resolution and support, we'll introduce them on the floor. We all love doing that, and I think helping to support, like, the education community is, is something that we're all interested in doing, and I think that's a really good way to highlight those accomplishments. Thank you.
Thanks. Like I had said, Bob and I thought these 12 questions, but they were, they got input from everybody. They got it from schoolteachers, other people in the school committee.
It went to everybody.
It went to everybody. And the first couple of. And it's interesting, the first two, of course, are the things that we have probably the most challenges with. Finance, the funding formula, unfunded mandates. I mean, we have to go every year to the City Council, hat in hand, ask for, you know, as much money as we possibly can. And then, we end up waiting until the last minute. We hear from the state how much we're gonna get from the state for funding. So, it, it's, it's a budget process that would never work in the private sector. But that's the one that, that we have to deal with, and it's very challenging. Beth, did you want to comment?
Well, the funding formula, I would love to hear an update from where you all are on discussing it, and are there bills in this session that are looking at it? Because I know it's always been a complicated issue, but I think that we need to look at it from a new perspective, because we have a whole new demographic. We have a lot of issues that are expensive, that may not have been discussed when the original funding formula, you know, was written. So, I'd like to know if there's a, if we can hit a refresh button at the State House and start talking about, not necessarily, you know, give us more money, but, of course, we want that. But how it's designed, you know, what are the, what's the criteria statewide?
So, the, I'll jump in for a beginning on that. The, as the Chairman indicated, in fact, we'll be starting on Tuesday for hearing the budget. It's back to a few meetings articles on the budget, and like the Chairman, I think they meet more than we do. We'll have meetings from Tuesday, Tuesdays and Thursdays, now through the end of April. February begun, well, the games have begun. It's the kinda thing, it's a lot of work to get, Chairman knows, a lot of work to do with just the budget, and then all the bills that come on top of that. I'll talk a little bit about what's in the governor's proposal in the budget. I can't talk about what's proposed by others, because, as was mentioned by Don, Lauren, and company, bills are still coming in. So, I don't know all the bills that are there as it relates to funding formula. Will there be changes to the funding formula proposed by members? I would say categorically, yes. How do I know? Just assume that that's gonna happen. It does every year. For a right, and you can ask me, what are they? Don't know. They're gonna be a variety and some are gonna be for all of those things. There're gonna be various things with regards to how do we address the school success factor. As Senator Oyer indicated, lunch and breakfast of lunch will be another thing. And some bills will go to education and finance at the same time. One thing when the governor proposes the budget, and technically finishes it in December, finishes the printing of it in the January timeframe, they have to use the October enrollment data. And just pretend that we've had conversations on this many times over the years. That doesn't necessarily reflect your population. So, if somebody said, what, what's the school gonna get today? We can give you an estimate, but it's gonna change, because we'll typically gonna update that with a March data. So, that's, because you indicated before, it's, if I say how to give you a number now, anyways, we give you a number if we say that's the wrong number, unless you know your population is not gonna change at all, and it does. And we know, I'll come back to the population, Newport from, thank you to the testimony, right? I use your name often, not in vain, but in a positive way with regards to how student populations change from beginning of the year to just a one-month later. So, if you look at the number of new students Newport would have on September 1st, pick day, you'll have these many younger new students, whatever this is. Come October, you'll have the same number of students total, but the number of new students just doubled. And there's a phenomenon there of why students come in here, why students go out. And it's about learning English, which is a good thing, but then they leave because they need to go, predominantly males, I think, was the case, go out and get a job. So, the dynamics are different in every city and town. Let's talk a little bit about what's in the budget this year from education. About, not quite 44 million new dollars added to education, K-12 education aid statewide. Of that 10 million, 11 million is targeted to five cities and towns. Central Falls, Pawtucket, Providence, Wind Socket, Newport. Newport's the second one. I put it at the end. So, there, Newport's targeted to get some additional more money as it relates to this new success factor, right now, which is at 40% over the core value. We're gonna change that proposed to 43%. Will that, will that survive? Don't know. Are we moving in some of the right direction based on the analysis of the funding formula over the last, I don't know how many years, we've had several commissions looking at that? Yes. Is the funding formula perfect? Categorically, not. The one thing that's still not changed in there is how, how we calculate who should get free and reduced lunch. We've had proposed before, and I think this is the year, the day the Chairman, I think, with regards to, right, coming back to what's to say, how do we, what other states do? Is it Medicaid? Is it SNAP benefits? How to determine who's eligible for it, to make it consistent? I don't know why it's so hard, or what the challenges are. We've asked about them, sometimes it just comes back and it's a swirl. But the change right now, the governor's not proposing any modification to the algorithm used to determine how many students, which students should receive free and reduced lunch. That still stays the way it does. Will it remain? Can't guarantee it's gonna remain, so right now, everything is on the table. The Chairman said, the entire budget's on the table. The governor proposed it. It's our job now to dissect it, article by article, subarticle by article, bill, and all the testimony that comes in to address the budget. The other piece is, the governor has proposed for the 1365 programs, about $2.5 million for that. That's, that's what we are, most likely, when education comes up, there's two hearings that have significant amount of activity, funding margins. One is education, the other one is that, given that it affects a large number of people.
I think Beth's question speaks more to the actual funding formula versus the next year's budget.
Criteria, that's what I'm asking.
And so.
Right, right now, there's no, no proposed change.
Could we change that? Is there possi, is there a possibility to reconfigure that funding formula? I think it's stagnant. I think we need to change the criteria and the rubric of how it's designed.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I don't know, again, if anybody put any bills on that. The Senator's correct. We're still waiting to see, you know, what those are going in, but it's like hundreds going in a day, right? Can't read them all, they're always, they come up for hearings. I don't know if there's a discussion in the House about it, but I did have a question for the two Senators, and Lou alluded to it. The Senate has had study commissions on the funding formula. What came of that? What, I know, did anything come of that?
Yeah, several, several changes in a bunch of different areas, trying to make it better. One of the challenges has been, if you look at the, I'll call it, phenomena of success. Pawtucket, the Wind Socket, not too much Central Falls, it's the state pays just about all, just about all of Central Falls. School housing aid as well as the education funding for students. One of the challenges we've seen is that the real challenge within those, according to most others, of being able to afford the education that they have. The other challenge has been, the language has been put in, because the state says, this is what the state's share ratio is going to be for each county or community. The other part of the ratio was the cities and towns piece. There's been conversation with regards to, what we'll call the maintenance of effort. So, if the state's putting 55%, let's just say for numbers, there's an expectation that the city and town's gonna put 45%. Some cities and towns, while the state's going up, the cities and towns went down. It's just a matter of fact. Somebody say, wanna see the data? Well, we'll go resurrect some of the data for you, or it's been stagnant. So, with a 55, it's not going down from a dollar to cents per cent. But the percentage that should be applied has not been applied, because additional money came from the state. So, that's the part where the calculation is, it goes back to what Commissioner Gist was here. Changes have been made. We've looked at the E-Wave and other, the algorithm that's there. Root mean squared or quadratic mean, whichever one you choose to use, define the algorithm. We need to figure out how to improve it, but right now, there's, will it be updated this year? Can't guarantee yes, it can't guarantee no. But we do need to figure out where we see and identify issues, we fix it.
Sorry, and I'll just add on to, like, as a historical note, because the establishment of the current funding formula was done while my predecessor was in my seat. And what I, what I will say, and I will give Teresa credit, that the funding formula exists, there's a floor in the funding formula as far as the state-level contribution to different municipalities. And without that floor that she worked to make sure was in there, Newport would actually be getting less than it's getting now. And so, I think that, and, you know, I've talked to Marvin about this, and I believe he said it publicly, so I don't think I'm outing him saying anything that he and I have said privately. But, you know, when we all have conversations with our colleagues, they all think of all of the Bellevue Avenue mansions. And so, when we talk about conversations about how can we get Newport more, whether it's the Port funding formula, or like, the tourism dollars, which Lauren has been really a fierce advocate on trying to adjust that in Newport's favor, we're running up against, you know, 38 other cities and towns who are like, so what was that sale of that property in Newport value that just now? And tell me again why Newport doesn't have any money. So, that's the perspective that we're all trying to push against, and that's kind of the core of where the funding formula is.
Question, is the amount of subsidized housing per municipality factored into the formula?
Not directly, that's.
That would be something that maybe you could introduce as a bill.
That's been a bill that I've been putting in.
Let's, let's get behind that. Yeah, I wanna comment on what the Senator has said. I think that she's absolutely right about the rest of the state's perception of Newport. In fact, we touched on this conversation when we met with the City Council about a month ago. And I would be in favor of a conversation amongst city leaders, and I would help, to like, repackage our message as to what Newport is actually about and what we actually look like. Because there is that perception that Senator Oyer's talking about. And it's kinda hard to get over that perception, because Newport, all I gotta do is drive downtown, you know, and they see it with their own two eyes, right? Because Newport, all I gotta do is drive downtown, you know, and they see it with their own two eyes, right? So I'm, I'm in favor of, of all of us, city council, school committee, elected, repackaging the Newport message. I think that would serve us well over the long haul in terms of legislation and budget share.
Do you have flowers?
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, Stephanie and I were at the Rhode Island Association of School Committees presentation at one of the annual meetings. And yeah, it was an excellent presentation regarding the funding, funding formula, among other things. And, and this is where we visual awareness really can focus. And perhaps it would be something that everyone should look at, where the, besides that quadratic equation, the square root came in, but showing the, the line charts of decreased population but increased needs. And to look at the various points that are plugged in for each community. And that one of the issues that we have here, and I think it was brought up pretty clearly at that particular session, is that all of these little points that come in, that it's the poverty level, as you say, people seem to think they're all living in mansions. And that everyone's paying the, the huge chunk of change that the city does need anyway. But also the fact that we have, I think Newport is known for the services that are provided to our young people. Those with some developmental delays of our social emotional teaching, all of this sort of thing, the special education factor. And the ELL, MLO, whatever, the, the letters that we use here to describe the youngsters for whom English is not their first language. And this is not the country of origin for a great many of them. Some coming in even very late in their school careers. So I think that we, we were fortunate to be there to hear all that. And I think it's probably even available, the videos they made of that, not just for you folks, because you have access to all of that information, but for people who couldn't make it there and the general public who can see, oh, this is what's happening here. And, and all the other communities too. Some have fewer challenges, some have as many if not greater challenges. But that's something that I think everyone has to be aware of.
She swims off?
Real quick, a question, a comment on that. One of the core pieces of the funding formula is the, I think they call it the, the wealth ratio. The community, what is perceived as the community's ability to pay, which is, I think, unfortunately, a reflection of the way schools are funded in America in general, where the community might have a lot of wealth and chooses to put it into their schools or not. And some communities want to put more but don't have the wealth. And so I don't know that there's any kind of minimum standard that the state has set, well, this is what you should be putting into your schools, and you as a community can pay it, and don't, and should. But I just think it's an interesting, one of the legs of the school, right, is that perceived ability to pay. And it really penalizes a community's working force that is perceived to have a lot of wealth, but also has everything else that any community could have.
I think the message, as we said before, even with regards to the Navy, we'll talk to folks in Burbank, we'll say the Navy, you got that down there already. And we can talk about the impact of beyond the Navy, the Coast Guard and NOAA, and new students that's gonna bring to the area, and how the entire area, right, the entire county, Newport County where those families are gonna live, nominally in Newport, middle town area, suspect maybe Portland for some.
Yeah, they're going over a response more like, you know, they can't stand that because they can't, they're not coming to the Congress.
So the piece about the, with regards to the message getting there, I think the message has been resonating, the governor's heard it, the general assembly's heard it. Can we say it's been heard enough or to the degree that needs to with the additional, almost a hundred million dollars in the budget just for those five communities? I can't guarantee, can't say that yet, but the message, there's, there's a kind of thing of hearing, listening and acting. The acting's actually happening with regards to additional money for those five communities, Newport one. And that, it's not all thirty-eight. So there's five of the thirty-eight there, share, it's an additional money because of the politics. But yeah, back to the L, ELL, the slash and budget, we're in big issue. And I know chairman and I meet come the end of April, we meet on a very regular basis. Why? Figure out where the budget's coming. Very regular basis, okay? We heard everything we heard, we heard hours of testimony, thousands of people testify. Well, last year, we proposed, and it could've stayed, it could've gone, we made certain it stayed, money for literacy and money for math. Math coaching, math learning, not necessarily to the degree that was proposed, but we understand and appreciate, category, everybody said, if you can't read, you can't do anything else. And there was money during COVID for training teachers on the Right to Read Act, bill that the Senator Lawson had modified and then Senator, I had it before that. Basically, the science of reading, which has been talking to Newport, middle town, I had an intern that did some work on it with four or five cities and towns, seems to be very positive. I'm not, I'm an engineer, I'm not a teacher. We need to figure, how do we continue that? But that's the additional money that was put in the budget to address issues of math and literacy in the perspective of rating the level. Yeah, go ahead.
In that vein, Lou and I have had this conversation many, many times. I think I hope you all know this. Money for math, money for reading, that's all really great. But at a, at a more macro level, is the general assembly talking about values and goals of what the children are learning and how they're learning? So I'm really use the word steam education. And math is, is everywhere, and literacy is everywhere, but it's how it's presented to the child to make it relevant, also to our workforce, we have very specific needs here in the state. So throwing money for more science of reading, great, math, great. But how is the general assembly sending the message out to all thirty-nine districts about how that money is used as we partner with our economy? You know, we're all in this together. So is that a theme at all? I know in the past it has been, I think maybe back in twenty sixteen, there was some legislation. How can we, and I know it's on here, but I want to bring it forward because when we talk about reading and math, it really is about how that money is spent and the value and outcome that it yields. So is there a K-six steam education conversation going on at the State House at all? Time, you're giving me like, maybe, I don't know. It's really important that we as a state start talking about outcomes. Throw a lot of money at programs?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think here's, here's where that, those conversations live, is that we do have curriculum bills, and we put through different, like initiatives around different curriculum. But really, a lot of these conversations do need to be with the local school districts, and they need to be through RIDE, and we help fund those initiatives.
That's, that, this was the genesis of, Lauren asked me to maybe have this meeting, and the genesis for me was, how do we get to RIDE? And everybody said, it comes from the general assembly. Now you're saying it comes from RIDE. So how do we get that message? And I think it is the general assembly that has to be the, the ones that purvey that message to, to RIDE, to the districts, to, to start talking about how we can do better for our children. And that's, that's not just curriculum, that's, that's a value system. You know, that's, that's workforce development at an early, early stage.
Yeah, I mean, some of the conversations around like trying to connect like workforce development. I mean, I've had a conversation with both Department of Labor and Training, as well as Office of Secondary Commissioner. And there is that constant evaluation that happens between programs, between where that, you know, where the outcomes are. I mean, I know that some of the tension locally, for example, is like the cosmetology program. The original reason that cosmetology was not funded as part of the Move Forward Plan was because there wasn't data from the cosmetology, like industry, showing that there were good career pathways that led to like family sustaining jobs. And so like, this is a constant like, you know, push and pull. I think, I agree with you, like STEAM education is completely important as far as like a framework that we need to be using for education for our kids. And you know, I know that I've heard folks who have a lot of criticism about RIDE, and there's, you know, there has been that pushback that I've heard. And I think what I worry about in some of these conversations, because I absolutely advocate and, and push for those things, we've done a series of bills, like, yeah, the MLL education has been a big focus on that because you can't do the math problem if you can't read the math problem, right? And so it is a connection of those issues. And you know, there's been kind of additional legislation that we have put forward trying to adjust that with the Right to Read Act that Lou mentioned and other, other items like that. So I think if there's stuff that you guys are hearing or seeing that you want us to put in, I think we're all more than happy to help put those bills in to help drive a conversation.
At a higher level.
Yeah, because I, I do think that public education is a community benefit and it's a community project. And I agree with you, we all need to be talking about that, and we need to be pushing for that. The thing that I get concerned about where some of the messaging goes is that I, I don't want us to be in a position where we are having the arguments where the kids aren't doing well, so therefore we should underfund, therefore we should pull funding. And you make, you're making a face at me, but that is, that is where some of the conversation goes.
At the State House?
I think everywhere. I think everywhere, I've heard it locally.
That seems counterproductive, isn't it?
It's absolutely counterproductive, but I think it's, it's really important that when we're talking about these conversations, that we are talking about actually understanding why we're not hitting the scores, why we're not seeing the achievements, and giving the support so that we can.
And using best practices from other states. You know, we really can learn, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. California's been doing this for fifteen years. And K-sixteen is the integration of all content areas. And the art, the art, the A, is the humanities, it's geography, it's music. And all of that comes into getting kids jazzed about learning and the relevancy of what they're learning. And then STEM is more middle school, high school, you know, but we gotta get those K-six kids interested in, in topics that, you know, a worksheet isn't going to jazz them.
Well, and I'll, I'll say too, the other thing is that part of the reason that there hasn't been probably as much of a public focus on that, you know, things go in waves, things go, I guess, in trends for better or worse, right? But we know it's consistency that gets us the outcomes. And the conversation that we've been having across the state through the past few years, because an identified deficiency is the pre-K. So you're talking K through six, you get kids in K and they're already behind developmentally.
I know it's been a big trend to talk about pre-K, especially as a platform issue in the dinner party and I get it. But I'm talking about getting kids jazzed about learning and reading in their classroom and all of the after-school programming as well, Learn 365, Community School. We all have to be on the same page. I'm hearing a lot of atomization of different programs. I really would like the, the general assembly, the general assembly to start talking about methods and ways that we can actually improve our outcomes for all children in our state. And studies prove that that is the way to do it.
I think that in order to get to that place, there's a hundred and thirteen of us that have a whole variety of ideas. And that kind of a conversation would be complex. It would require engagement of a lot of different folks. I think, I think, I mean, I know that people don't want to hear this, and I don't necessarily say this about everything, but I think there needs, it needs to be studied. And what I mean by study is really engage all the players. And that's a tall order to really make that sort of cultural transitional orientation change, switch over statewide in the way we perceive and promote education. So I think that's probably why you're not seeing that, because it's a very tall order to take on statewide. And would require a lot of research fantasies.
I'd definitely, Jim, were you gonna say something?
I was gonna say, like, we have twelve things to talk about. This is number one for a reason on the list, and we literally could talk about this all day. But if we do, we're not gonna get to anything else. So I do have a question from the audience. And I will say, if anyone has a question from the audience, write them down, give them to Ms. Nash.
Cards are over there.
Yep, and she'll hand them to me. And it would be better if you asked a question while we're actually on the discussion item. So I'm gonna read this question, and we'll get an answer from one of you guys, and then we'll move on to number two. This is from Penny Billington, it says, is there a state law that restricts school districts from asking the city or town for more than four percent funding increase year over year? This is frequently stated by some local officials and quoted in the newspaper even this week. But I have heard that is incorrect version of the four percent cap on the property tax levy year to year, thank you. What do you guys wanna tackle that?
So the, read the first part of your, no, don't read.
Oh, the first one, it says, is there a state law that restricts school districts from asking the city or town for more than a four percent increase year over year? I don't believe there's.
I don't, I, I think that's a misstatement of like the law around the property. There's like a, a bar on a four percent property tax increase, but it's not, it's not as simple as I just made it sound in that one sentence. Because folks need to like understand how the property tax levy works, which is also complicated and differs district to district.
Please, the guys.
Sure.
So if I remember correctly, and it's been a while, there's a cap on four percent for the city. If the city could take all of its money and put it to the schools, the schools could get nine and ten percent increase. But all the other, other departments in the city would either take a cut or they wouldn't get anything. So it's not more on school, it's, it's more, if I'm not mistaken.
On average, a school costs or good budget sixty-five percent or whatever of your municipal budget, take four percent times that, you are, it doesn't leave much for the rest of, rest of municipal government, like the Essex. In case it's at the macro level, it's not at the.
Good question. We'll move on to two point. Yeah, yeah.
Is that a governance issue? Just a question. Meaning, meaning that because it's school committee and city, the city has contracts and obligations, and then there's the city. Because if school committee doesn't have the taxing authority, then the city is kind of, that's why the school committee has to go and ask for the money, and the city at the same time.
Having served on the town council for two terms before I ran the senate, it's a single budget. There should not be two budgets. So I know there might be some folks here that want the school department to have their own budget. I would not be in favor. It's a single budget that the city, that the residents of the city or town want to go down, want to go and talk about.
Thank you.
But that's just the, others may think differently, just having seen it for sixteen years now in the senate, four years prior to that, and actually with the budgets. What's something I want to be talking about later, I'm not certain, was on the list was special ed, which is another, probably your biggest cost area, driver each and every year, far, pales in comparison to everything else. So we shall, we shall at least talk about that.
I have another question from the audience. Says Lou made a statement, something like, like there has been positive outcome regarding the science of reading. What is the measure and the specific outcome?
So we can, we're, great question. I will get you the report that was done by, I had an intern from Brown University who studied Newport, middle town, Tiverton, Bristol Warren and one other. She then went back to Brown for her senior, last semester of her senior year, and did the entire senior project just on the Right to Read Act, the science of reading. And we can get you those numbers to show that the, so my wife is a retired teacher, my daughter, my daughter's a teacher, my wife's whole family are teachers. I get to hear it all the time, but my daughter was a literacy coach for a master's degree. Focus on Norton Gillingham, which is phonics based. I'm gonna talk like I know what I'm talking about, but I don't. I know I'm old, that's how I learned to read, was phonics based. Looking at, looking at that, and looking at how it affects and how it addresses some even some students that would've gone into special ed after third grade. The numbers show in the tests, I can't, it was DIBELS, was one of the type of assessments that were done, and I forgot. I know middle town did all the training in one year, Tiverton did it over two years for all the teachers, and it's both being proficient and all teachers being assessed, having an awareness, I think. Everybody's aware, every single teacher, gym teacher, doesn't make a difference what you're doing. And everybody, but certain teachers had to be proficient in the science of reading. So I'll get you that report, I'll get to the superintendent, she can get it to whoever, or chairman, I'll get that to you, and you can share that with folks to show the positive impact it's having. We need to stick with it, but it's a case where, as we were saying earlier, if you're unable to read, put everything else away, put everything else away. We have to be able to read. And if we do, I think sometimes general assembly doesn't do some good things. I'll say, when you leave the general assembly, that will be one of the things I think that we did, which was the right thing to do, was the Right to Read Act and getting training for teachers on the science of reading. But we'll get you that report, Ray Point asking for the data.
Thank you, appreciate it. The next discussion I had was unfunded mandates. And I guess it just, I guess we can just ask, are there any more unfunded mandates?
I don't know, I guess I'll just back to you because like, this is the, the thing is.
They come from RIDE.
Yeah.
But you can help position them for us.
Yes. You have a lot more authority with RIDE than.
Right.
Would you like some more?
What's that?
And I think that.
And I think that, um, you know, there's, and I'm looking sort of at the legislative process, I don't go on the radical side, but probably the same way. So if a bill goes in and it pass, and, and there is a, or an unfunded mandate in there, I mean, I don't know to what extent you react to that, but you have to say something there, like that's the moment, okay? Not like the bill passes, it's never implemented and then you come back and say we don't have the money. Because we go through this process where we meet with people, write a bill, go to the lawyers, have a committee hearing, you come, you go, go to the floor. I mean, that's like, that's like twenty steps there, which I love to do, don't get me wrong. But tell us on the front end, okay? That way we can figure out how to make it work without putting any handicap on it.
Well, and I'll say that this is the tension, right? Like where you guys just told us we're supposed to lead on the state level and I'm saying we need to hear from the locals. When we, when we do try to do things that are big initiatives that we think should be statewide direction for the improvement, oftentimes the flip, we get the flip back coming from school committees saying that's an unfunded mandate. So I'd be curious, what is an unfunded mandate and where should we be?
Fixing things.
Right.
Like, Connie, can you give us some examples?
Well, one example is, and we did go up to the state house, was when we extended in special ed, since special ed is such a cost driver for the district. We extended a program where a child, when a child turned twenty-one, the school district no longer was responsible for his or her education. That got, that got amended at the state house. Marvin's nodding his head because I did reach out to him about that. Because we knew that that was going to require the school districts to continue to educate children throughout that year. So if a child, so we had to continue staffing and, um, other things as far as what the requirements are for special ed. That's just one. Uh, sometimes when we have, um, uh, I'll say requirements as far as the type of programs we have to have in our schools, um, based on all good intention, that sometimes requires different people with different certifications to have to be present in our classrooms. And then we have to, as a district, look at how we, which you shared, professionally develop and provide the courses and the things they need to do. That costs money. That costs also education time where our teachers are no longer in the classrooms with the students because of either C D As or other things work related. They, um, can't be done outside school hours or if they are, it will cost money as well. So those are just a few, a few off the top of my head.
Again, I think that the process is open. I'm not being critical of your participation, I welcome that. But I think that there needs to be, in my opinion, a stronger response from the entire community, not Newport, the educational community, that this is an unfunded mandate. Because what happens is we pass the laws and then you can't do it. And I, I, I'm becoming increasingly frustrated with that. So anyway, that's where I'm at on this.
Right. One of the other things is with the declining enrollment, you know, all of us know this and I'm on the ledge committee and that's why you've seen me up at the state house for the superintendents. One of the things we're trying, we're having discussions about and just preparing everyone for, because we have student enrollment declines, we know for each of our communities that means state aid goes down. So we're wondering to the component of the state aid formula, that is a wonder about whether or not we should reconsider that, if Dr. Wong's looking at that, it wasn't all with Dr. Wong when the formula was put in place and so we talked many times about it. But, um, that's something I think we could take advantage of. And I've even heard, and I believe you have a bill going in right now for regionalization, if a community decides to regionalize, that might be an incentive to put six percent towards that, and I think, I believe it came out of the house just this week, that was one of the bills I received, that, um, it helps to encourage incentivize the communities to regionalize. There's, there's no doubt that if communities like on, um, Aquinic Island, even Tiverton with Thompson over in Bristol Warren, it's not sustainable. And we've got to really think of ways in which we can get community members to understand the benefits of regionalization and at the same time make it affordable for years to come.
So before we get to regionalization, the thing that I, I just want to respond again to the, the unfunded mandate conversation, because I think that there's, you know, the big picture of us trying to get all of the best outcomes for our students, the things that you listed, um, sound like mostly good initiatives that are gonna help support students in our community get the best outcomes, um, get better educational outcomes. So if we're, if we're being asked to drive from the state level, education policies that are gonna help support public education and support better outcomes, than coming at us and saying that's an unfunded mandate, kind of is a, it's kind of a counterpoint to that request, is what I'm saying. So I think if, if the conversation is more like, we understand that that is, you know, like a good public policy reason, this is gonna have a budget impact, how can we go back to the funding formula in account for like, you know, performance-based outcomes that incentivize the districts to do X, Y and Z? I think we're gonna be starting at a much better place because unfunded mandate is, at this point, is a talking point. And it's divisive and it's an attack line. So I think if we're gonna collaborate together to try to push these policies that are better for public education, I think we need to be advancing those policies, recognize the budget impact and all work together to try to advance those good policies for our students.
Just going back to the regionalization piece, so on the books today, Senator Philag, you put the bill in every year and he serves on finance. But on the books today is a regionalization bonus that says two percent for your first year, one percent for your second year and then it goes away after that. Some, some will say it should be there forever and it's like, well, uh, the initial investment, the investments that's there is to assist in the transition, the additional two percent and one percent in there. Because after that, the expected expenses will be less. When you have a regional school district, you're reimbursing costs on, we all know about the topic of reimbursement call, costs on construction, regionalization, where that goes and where that could go, it hasn't, uh, could have been, but those benefit themselves in different ways in that regard. So there is something there now, but always things come in differently.
All right, thanks, though. Do you have a question from the audience, so after this question, we'll, if you guys have more questions?
I have time just on that one issue. I don't know if you've, whether you've been there long enough, maybe, to speak to the, um, disconnect on regionalization that Bristol Warren experienced.
They, they have, I mean, it's, I think it's existed in Charahoe as well, just recently, like a year or so ago with regards to, and I'm not certain which of the three, uh, cities and towns, three of the towns there had a challenge with whatever.
Hockington.
Was it Hockington? So there's been challenges with regards to regional school districts and there's another one, there's two other ones in the state, one up northern part of the state where they have a regional high school, but the, so they have three school committees, one for the high school, one for the elementary school levels on both sides or whatever level it goes. Uh, I think there's always challenges with regards to, uh, I'll call it a marriage or a family.
The dollars in the house. You can learn from their mistakes and.
Marriage and family. Everybody doesn't agree on it, you gotta figure out how to walk through those things to get on the other side, but, uh, I, they're still together now. Uh, I'm not certain Bristol Warren will find part ways. They could. Well, I'll talk, Senator Philag was, was on the local council there for twenty years, I think he's been in the senate out for twenty-four or twenty-five and wasn't warm, so he knows it. I think he, he was there when they regionalized, so I'll back and ask him, what's that?
Dr. Flowers?
Yeah, just of interest, uh, talking about the unfunded mandates and then you look at number two point three of these mandated hours of instruction also. So once you mandate, uh, say to the communities, you know, thou shalt teach such and such, whatever, name anything. And as someone who taught in Newport schools for thirty years, where are we supposed to flip this when we still have the same number of hours? So you really can combine and operate, I'm just bringing a point here, we can combine a lot of these points. That a mandated program, if you will, impacts on the hours of instruction, it impacts therefore on the school calendar and also the financial issue too. Because if you're going to have asking, asking people to do twice as much of what they're supposed to be doing, compensation does come. And then with that comes more certification. So it's a whole domino effect that's going on here. So I'm, I'm just looking at this list and if we want to get a lot more done than the time we have left here, sometimes we can look at this and see how some things.
They're interrelated, yeah.
But keeping that in mind, the, the unfunded mandate sometimes, in fact, not only financially, but also on the, uh, just the everyday strategies.
Thank you, Dr. Flowers. So a question from the audience, the new proposed M L L regs have extensive mandates on teacher education that will potentially be unfunded. Uh, how can we mitigate that or plan for that tremendous financial undertaking so we don't lose quality staff and teachers? So and after this question, we'll move on to the next one. You guys wanna tackle this?
I guess the, I would say from my perspective, I'd just like to know more, maybe after, know more about the specific issue that's here. I, I understand that what you're saying at the macro level, it's really looking, going down to the micro level, what are the specific piece parts that are driving that?
Federal regulation requires that, federal regulation requires when students test at a certain level, that a certain, um, certification is required to provide the services, very similar to federal requirements for I D B E A and all.
Here's a funding.
So when we have a population that has a large number that require that M L certification, school districts, and it's been, uh, going on in urbans for many years, but now suburbs are seeing it, so you're probably gonna hear more about it. It's the certification of teachers to be able to provide those hours. And, um, we're trying in our districts to make sure that we have regs and we have certified teachers in front of students. And I know RIDE is now currently revising the M L regu, regulations that are, I think they're over seventeen years old. And we'll have new regulations that come out in June that help us with our districts and as far as how we can do this.
Thanks for bringing it up, we can figure out how we need to help in that regard.
Uh, perhaps, um, I might get in trouble for this, but, um, giving us more of the, of the dollars that are coming in through our hotel taxes, our food and beverage taxes, you know, bringing some of that back to the communities that have a lot of hotels and a lot of need for, um, money to get everybody speaking English. You know, I'm saying this in sort of a obtuse way, but I think that we should get more money from that food and beverage and from our, um, Discover Newport funding, our bed taxes and all of that.
So I would have that conversation with our, uh, mayor that's here and say, so mayor, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move some of that money coming into the city side.
Rebecca's here from Convention Latina and, um, what percentage work in our, in our hospitality industry that you, that you deal?
Of our M L L.
Work with.
It's high.
Yeah.
And so just to clarify, the new M L L regs, the new proposed M L L regs, there's gonna be a requirement for M L L certification on some level for every teacher that directs for children from P E teachers to, to math teachers in high school. And it's on their dime, so.
It sounds a lot like.
Potentially. Or on the teacher, yeah.
It sounds a lot like the, uh, Science of Reading, Right to Read Act, et cetera.
Exactly. And the request has been, and during the testimony and with the Department of Ed, is to provide the timeline that was provided for Science of Reading to give districts so many years. And, but, uh, on the other side of it is the understanding that teachers and all of us in districts have to realize that our teachers do need these, this certification already in front of the children.
I'd like to suggest, uh, to pretend you're there quite a bit, you're a fixture of the, uh, state house in education, not so much finance, we miss you in finance. We've made, we, we've heard the message today, we'll hear it again, but I think the piece, aligning it, that, because people will know what we did with the Right to Read Act as it relates to the science of reading and what was set up and needed with regards to teacher training. If, when we have that conversation, we align those two things in similar fashion, people resonate pretty quickly, like, oh, you did that over there, you're asking us to do the same thing over here and this is what it means.
And I can give, I can send all of you the clip notes that we've been working off of in the.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip, um, two point three, because that sort of talks about funding. And two point four is transportation, but transportation also is funding. So we spent probably hour and ten minutes.
It's funding, but it's also the regional, um, zones, um, because so many of our, so many of our, um, high schools now have C T E programs, they call them academies, North Kingston, there again, said, Tiverton, us, um, they're not all in the same transportation zone. So I think we need to relook that as we build our C T E programs and we encourage our students to take specialized initiatives. I think we need to relook how they get there.
So that's something that there's a senate study commission.
And also.
Senate House.
Joint. It's a jointly important.
And also like all of the school committee, uh, groups are talking about that.
It's an old, it's an old zone. It's very old, before we had all these C T E programs.
Both the chairs of that study commissioner from Aquinic Island, Terry Corbin and Senator Jufusso, so that's, that's, those are the people to talk to about transportation. And they're meeting to figure out, I mean, it's not only us, there's the issues down in Charahoe and Bristol Warren and we'll be kids around, so.
Needs to be relooked at. I remember Teresa probably talking about it twenty years ago. Things have changed tremendously since then.
I would be surprised if we don't take action on that either this year.
I agree, I agree.
Two point five is up next, statewide K through twelve cellphone ban. And, uh, this has been important to Ms. Boland, it's been important to me, and, uh, please take this off of our plate.
We need you to support this.
It makes so much more sense to have a statewide ban. I'm sure Mr. Vance, the Principal of Rogers High School, I'm sure he probably feels the same way. If we can get everybody in the state on the same page with the cell phone.
New Jersey just did it.
How do you have a policy in place?
We do, but it's so difficult to enforce. You know, Mr. Vance, if you wanted, if you wanted to tell us.
I mean, is a statewide ban gonna make it easier to enforce?
Yes, because in New Jersey just did it, the country of Brazil just did it, France does it, Italy does it. It's the power of your power coming from a macro level saying, we know that cell phones are harmful, not just distracting, harmful to the outcomes of our children. So this has to come from the top down.
So two points. The first one is that Representative Casamiro out of North Kingston has a bill statewide banning cell phones. I told her I'd co-sponsor it, she hasn't come to me to do that yet. I had a conversation with her just about a week and a half ago about this bill, just a quick conversation, not really in depth. You know, I asked her how they were gonna do it, I asked her like what authority municipalities would have to work it in their own districts. I, I, I quite frankly, I don't remember all the answers she gave me, but she is working on it. And, uh, if she comes to me to co-sponsor that, I will do it. But back to, uh, Senator Oyer's question, can you ta, talk about how having a, a statewide ban assists in enforcement in this building?
Well, because it's a ban.
Messaging.
It's a ban. Like, we don't have a ban right now.
I don't think the kids pay attention to the state house.
Why don't we have the chance?
I'm always, it's certainly time to count the training teams that.
Yeah, Mr. Vance.
So. Mr. Vance, would you like to speak, this is Jared Vance.
I'm in on your team, but I just want to understand.
It's, it's, I think having that ban come at the state level creates, um, a level of importance for school districts and communities around the dangers of cell phones in schools. Yes, they are distractions for kids when they're on their phones and whatnot, but it also plays into their mental health, where they're connected to social media and the internet on a regular basis all day long and they're flooded with messages. It's really hard as an institution to be able to manage cell phone access to kids when we don't have something larger saying, this is really important that these are no longer in buildings. Um, the, school districts that have adopted policies, things like the Yonder Packs where they have actual had, um, uh, equipment that restricts access to cell phones, the, the, the level of interpersonal communication that now happens in schools, the, the level of anxiety goes down because they don't have access to those self, to the social media messages that are bombarding students on a regular basis. Um, any of those things, you take that off the table. And for us, a lot of our negative student behavior comes from the fact that they have these, you know, apps and platforms at their hands and they're communicating with friends or people that are, you know, maybe bullying them online during the school day. It just adds a layer of angst to what's happening. And the focus is not on teaching and learning in the classroom, the focus is on how did we dissuade kids from these devices? And, you know, I'm a proponent of we need to try to educate students on how to use them appropriately. Um, but I think the floodgates have been open for so long, it's really hard now to backtrack that and say, okay, this is now how we use them appropriately when their entire day, their entire life is engulfed with that technology that's in their hands. So a state level ban or edict coming from RIDE and government would just add another So a state-level ban or edict coming from R I D E and government would just add another layer of importance. But it's also selling to, it's also selling to parents, because parents are, they want that immediate access to their kids. They're worried about certain things. And so now when we say we're gonna take that access away, we need a higher level to say, look, as a state, we're saying that this is important for our kids to be healthy during the school day and to focus on learning versus focusing on this, this device that's in their hands.
So my question is, do you want to see the bill as it relates to maybe feasible enforcement and how that all works? Because I'll send it to one of you folks.
Yeah, do you know what's in it?
I don't think she's put it in yet, I think she's still working on it. But I know it's one of her top two with three priorities, so there will be, there will be some, I would say, I don't know if it'll be sent in, but I think the House is gonna be real done with that question.
Oh, that would be great, I think it's very well said what Mr. Vance just said to Bowlen. Yes, you spoke well.
Really, but the potential for the unfunded mandate and feel like this is how to enforce that ban, because all the kids will have those phones in their pockets. So what, Newport and a lot of other districts, most school systems use a very popular solution, the yonder pouch. You put the phone in the, in a bag that's magnetically closed, you cannot access that phone. Because even, you know, the policy, current policy is that we don't allow cell phones. These have them in their pockets, they're migrating, they're still there, they're still a distraction. So we would not only need the ban from the state level, we also need the funding to support enforcing that. The tool to do it. And it's not that expensive for the state, but it is, you know, when you're facing a three or a four million dollar budget deficit, a hundred fifty thousand dollars is a million dollars, so.
Kind of feels to me like a generational thing, where it's like, we're gonna try to ban TikTok and then everybody revolts against us. Maybe, I'm just Gen X, so I'm on the, I'm on the cusp of that.
Dr. Flowers, sorry.
And prepare, because we've been on this, working on these policies for a few years now. Be prepared for your committees, you have some long sessions, because you might get one session where, yes, right, these kids should not have those phones, and they should not even have them at the house. And then you'll, a few weeks later, my child should be able to have the phone. And plus, there are mitigating circumstances technologically why some should have them. And then you might have some people say, hey, whatever you want. But, so there'd be, it would probably be several years before you can get the state level one. But there, there are, it would be really worthwhile if there were a uniform approach, at least throughout the state. And I believe from what comes across in a lot of the educational resources we get, that there are some states in some, you know, in the Midwest who are going that route and saying, this is what the policy is, this is what the practice is.
New smoking, what's the new smoking?
Yeah, and just, just do it.
It's bad. I just look at what the business.
So, I mean, maybe take a look at, like, California and some other states that have implemented it. And so sometimes they don't go to that level of telling each school how to do it, but rather, cell phones are banned. And then each district looks at how it works.
That's why I'm gonna send you the bill, so we can take a look at that.
To look out to how to do it, you know. But there's the, if you see the outcomes from kids, you know, from districts.
I don't disagree that it's, like, probably the best policy. I really appreciate that you all think that, we're so powerful to pay attention to.
It's a marketing messaging issue.
I think it's the one thing that we can do as a school committee to change, that we have the most power to change outcomes quickly, you know, on a mental health issue and, you know, possibly kids listening and paying attention in class, so.
It's a huge issue.
But I, I agree with Beth, and it's not that you guys have the power to make these things happen in the buildings or in districts, but the message of this is important for our children coming from the state down, I think is important.
How do other school districts feel about this, generally speaking? Is this like, is it being talked about all over the state?
Yes, it is, we've been talking about it, and I think that you're gonna see something from the ledge committee as well on that. And each is trying, some have tried, and some have, it's backfired on some districts in the approach, the communication, the way it was implemented. And others are slowly but surely having it happen. Central Falls did see great improvement on that. And Principal Vance has been reaching out to other communities and other households especially.
So that'd be helpful to know which districts have had success in doing it, because then when we're looking at what the language is, making sure that we're not undermining any of those.
Central Falls is one that, I know that P P S did a documentary about it, yeah.
I know we talked with some, so I have family members who are retired principals and teachers in high schools in Connecticut. I think that a year ago, in public high schools, not private high schools, and they just did it. And it's basically, not certain how they did it, I can talk to my brother-in-law, who was a principal at a high school, about twenty-three, twenty-four hundred students, they're like split up after two different high schools, to see what happens here. I know in Rhode Island, some of the private schools, they've done it.
They just, you're absolutely correct.
It's working. So I, it becomes one of those things where it's working there, so if I'm listening to it, if I'm testifying, and someone's gonna say, well, it's working there, how'd you do it there and you didn't have a state mandate to do it? I appreciate what the principal, he's lived in this every day, couldn't imagine living it every day, given the distraction, the impact of the lies and all that. However, we can help. But I want to, I want to go back to, should we say that earlier, and I won't speak for the chairman, but Stephanie made a comment about sending us some money. Not like, I'm just gonna say it. This year, this year is the year of, there's two categories of things. Things that are necessary and things that are nice to have. We maybe never get to the nice-to-have category, because we have to fund the things that are necessary. Things that are necessary need to have returns on investments. Any new start kind of programs are gonna really be looked at with an eye towards, we're doing that because. And we're gonna focus all on the because, not, it's great people, it's gonna go over here, it's gonna do it then. The return on investment is what, we gotta ensure that, we're gonna have, we're gonna take some risk on some things, because it's the right thing to do. But the necessary, so, school committee wins all likelihood, it won't be a check coming back.
I can't wait to jump in on this, I just wanna say, I think the return on investment for something like this would be huge. Huge, right? But also, a second point I wanted to make is that cell phones are a lifeline for a large portion of our population. We're very, very careful about restricting that access. Yes, when you're in school, we're teaching and learning, but for a lot of these kids, jobs and families, it's critical that they have their phones. And they have that ability to communicate with their families when they need to. So the schools, but that's like a big challenge for, in terms of Newport, where how do we actually implement this policy and protocol equitably for our, for our population? Just so, you think about, oh, well, the private schools did it, you know, but why are the public schools lagging behind? It's a much bigger problem.
Like you said, they're different, we need to understand the nuances of, it worked there because, there again, that preposition because, what comes beyond the because? Beyond the cause, they understand.
Right, and the work, the front-loading began in February or April, February or March preceding year. So by the time children left the school system, they knew when they were going home for the summer, that that September, they would not be having cell phones in their classes, or they were banned for during the school day.
So the implementation date is important?
Pardon?
The implementation date.
Implementation date is very good, it's just like anything else, when you, once schools, as a classroom teacher, you know you set the rules, you have your rituals or routine right from the beginning, because Christmas time, you can't change.
I'll look at that in the bill, and I'll send you the bill when you ask me that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else on this, or can we move on? All right, two point eight, I know this is important for Mrs. Colm, so I, it's workforce development.
I hope it's important for all of us. The reason that we're educating our young people is so that we're those successful adults. And I think that we, all of us stakeholders, state, local, the schedule delegation would agree, Rhode Island needs to do a better job of focusing on workforce development, be it certification, be it associate's degree, four-year college. So what do I mean by that? Twenty sixteen, the Brookings Institute did an economic report, are you guys all familiar with that? It kind of died, and we can blame COVID, but I don't, I think before that, it did not gain the traction at the General Assembly level that it deserves. Here are some of the things that Brookings suggested, marine trades and defense, these are workforce development that our schools should be focusing on. I T and cybersecurity, this is twenty sixteen, so nine years ago. Biomedical, kudos to the Speaker for bringing that up. We're really focusing, I think, at a state level on biomedical and life sciences, and also advanced manufacturing. So those are the things that Brookings, in their one hundred and ninety-eight page report, suggested we as a state adopt. All of us, start talking about it, starting in our elementary schools. We, this is, as, as Mr. Young said, this is career tech month, so February starts Career and Tech Education Month. We're very thankful that we think this building is gonna be safe, so that we have more space for programming, but the program, the system of things like preparing kids for fire, police, first responder jobs. Our city is desperate for those. E M T, we can start talking about programs that would be, and ocean technology. We had that for a little bit here at Rogers, and it went away because of lack of interest. Well, lack of interest is on us, the adults. We need to tell these kids that those jobs at every level, NOAA is gonna be hiring people with certification to do their marine electronics and their tanks and whatever they have in the new building. And then they're gonna go right up through Ph D level, marine science, marine scientists. So we as a community, I think, need to do a better job of talking about incentivizing young people to think of their futures and what our state needs in the workforce, preparing them for success, high-paying, high-growth jobs. That, that, that career exploration has to start in the K, K six, right? We really need to start talking about that. We really need to get our kids digitally literate in the elementary school. I, I think most people know, Mike and I have been pushing this for a very long time, but it's not meaning, it's not hitting the ground. We're not getting those kids prepared to be able to critically decide what is good information and what is bad information. We have to start focusing on that at our K, K level, K, K six elementary. We need to bring in industry more, you know, and we could use your help with that.
What does that mean?
That means talking to Newark more, talking to higher ed more. You know, bringing all the stakeholders in, so we have these conversations at a macro level. I'm just asking, just like with the cell phone, I'm asking for the General Assembly to start, Lauren, I wrote this down, you have a hundred bills a day? Go in, how many of those are workforce development related? How many of those are K twelve available? Yeah, but see, that's the seed that we have to plant, because if we fail these kids any more than we already have, we're screwed. I mean, we're, the social, the social outcomes, we, you know, our workforce, people are going out to Massachusetts to get employees, that we should be growing here in our state.
So what, I'm still, I'm still gonna ask the same question, because I don't think I understand the answer. What, what, who, should there be a dialogue, is that what you're asking for? Are you asking for a meeting?
The speaker, the speaker, let's just work with the, with the biosciences, he's made it, he talks about it a lot more than, right? Speaker's surprised about that. So how do we make that happen? It's great to have that conversation, but it needs to filter all the way through down to where we're getting our kids reading and doing basic math in the early grades, and know that they, if they do that, they have the relevance and the mastery to move forward. And we're not talking about that as a state. California's ahead of us again, and Massachusetts does this, I'm sure New Jersey and Connecticut do too. We're always at the bottom, because I think we don't have that conversation.
So should there be laws on this? Should there be public meetings on this?
This is kind of what I. It comes, it comes down to embracing the thematic of the Brookings Institute report. You know, what are we doing wrong, what are we doing right? STEAM education was referenced eighty, eight-oh times in that one hundred and ninety-eight page.
For me, it's not a matter of substance, it's a matter of how we do this.
Okay, Mike has a hand on it.
Can I, I want to help Beth out, because before Brookings showed up in Rhode Island, they spent a year in the state of Nevada. The same thing, the same prescription across their K through twelve with a real focus on K through six. What did the state of Nevada do at their General Assembly level? They created a state-level integration mechanism that created that interlock between their equivalent of Department of Labor and Training, of their equivalent of Department of Commerce, that saw all the opportunities, and their Department of Education. And over the course of the next eight years, that entity, that new entity that their General Assembly created, pushed down STEAM education, digital education within their K through twelve system, through their county level, down to their cities, down to their towns. And that's why an awful lot of the California corporations have moved into Nevada, because Nevada now, alongside their tourism industry, is building this high-tech, already has this organically built high-tech workforce. We lack that systems integration mechanism in Rhode Island. Dr. Power has a.
Well, I, first of all, I just want to say, you know, I'm sure everybody knows me and why I'm on the committee very narrowly. I mean, keep this building, don't tear it down. I'm sitting here looking at this building, saying, you know, this is a building that could provide opportunities to directly address, you know, the comments we've heard about programming for kids, and the other day we had a nice meeting with the city manager. We talked about the possibilities of Salve and Newark and the school department, and what kind of programs we could create right in this building, that we would be drawing probably some of the top kids from North Kingston and Bristol and Portsmouth into this building. So it's, and we've got numbers going down, but maybe we've got numbers as Mr. Young says, going up. Because we actually, if we create the right kind of programs here, even though we have a small population, we may also be able to take the cream of the crop from some of the other places, because we've created something. So, you know, again, I look at this building saying, that's why I don't want the building down. That and a long list that we've given people, it makes common sense to not take this down, the future of what we have. Will things change? And it also goes to regionalization, that if we, even if we regionalize, and we're a region that runs programs in this building that we draw from other school districts, you know, and those are tuition kids. When I was in Little Compton, they said, oh, you can't, you know, have tuition kids come here. Well, by the time I left, I had eleven tuition kids, because I had space in the classrooms. And that created money that we then used for technology for that district, that then the taxpayers didn't have to pay for, and we didn't ask the state for that. So I think, you know, if you look sometimes into the, into the future and say, what can we do with something, or what are the possibilities, as opposed to what do we have now? And that's not asking the legislature to do anything.
But, but be a convener.
And I think Massachusetts in nineteen ninety-three did so well with their miracles, because they had a, they convened industry, state-level politics, the unions, and the different school districts to come up with solutions, and it worked.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna move on to two dash ten, which is housing, and I'm gonna start off with a question from, from the audience. Says, are there any bills or other initiatives in the works to add teeth to the ten percent affordable housing mandate? As a subset of that, could the bill be further updated to require minimum percent of family units as opposed to senior units? Concentration of poverty in cities is a burden on districts and is not good for the kids and families.
I think we did something on that, do you folks remember this, or is my, my wrong? Was this something that the Speaker did around the ten percent?
Yep.
I don't think he was gonna change the ten percent, I think he just put a ta, I'm just, I'm not remembering what I said.
It's been discussed.
Would you like to say the ten percent?
Sorry, I can't help you with that.
I was gonna say, I don't know why you have that here.
Siri can help, I don't know who to talk to here, I usually talk to Alexa, Alexa's very nice. I got to talk to her twice. The ten percent's been around for a long time. There's no teeth to it, it'll take teeth, or we could add it to it. It's all, it just is what it is, it's out there, and we continue to talk about it and do very little with it, basically, from a state-level perspective.
So one of the suggestions was to incentivize the communities that are following.
I got it, right, and that's, and that's been discussed in regards to, there's really been no discussion with regards to penalizing, which is not a ten percent. And you put the highest in the state.
But I put in the bills to, to correct the funding formula to recognize Newport that doesn't get traction because the rest of the state isn't at ten percent, eat that idea.
And especially, a lot of districts now are going, and not districts, but cities are going to putting more senior housing in. But we all know senior, you know, they don't put the same burden that family, you know, like, families. So we not only have the highest, but we have, we've got to have the highest family housing, you know. And so, it's just an added responsibility to the city of Newport.
Well, the one plus about focus, and I've seen it in the four cities and towns that I represent, Dr. Power mentioned about, I want to go back to Little Compton. Right, they've brought even more students into tuition again, because they need to survive. You can't divide, and just given the cost of living in Little Compton, minimum lock size, eighty thousand square feet, right? R eighty, it's, unless you're a family that's there already, it's hard for a new family to come in. And I've seen some come in, and what they just do recently, several children, they moved to Tibberton, they couldn't afford Little Compton anymore. But the piece about the senior housing, there are many seniors, I know some in my districts, District Twelve, that rent a house, because they can't afford to move anywhere else. If you rent a house, husband and wife are just a single of three or four veterans, three or four mouths. We have, they have kids come over, and I know, with grandparents come over, what looks like, because they seem to be, like, a hundred and fifty yards from us. But it's the case where they have left to go somewhere, they can't afford to go anywhere. So the ability from a senior housing perspective is, okay, we got these family houses that are being occupied by seniors. It's their family house, they live there forever, they'd like to go somewhere else, because it's too big, it's too costly, et cetera. They have nowhere to go. So the ability for some senior housing can help relieve that, growing up a long time ago, the pressure curving, I think spinning on the top here, relieving that pressure valve a little bit, allows some of that to happen. Not the only thing that's gonna happen, but seniors have an ability to live in cities and towns with increased costs. with increased costs, can't afford the taxes on a lower piece of property they could, you know, open up. Union for a family to come in, whether it's NOAA, whether it's Coast Guard, et cetera.
But when that house costs over a million dollars, how many families are moving in? And that's the problem with these here.
Everywhere. It's the case of, uh, right, or this area, I think Middletown might have had the highest cost increase. At one point I thought I heard that, but then everyone sort of changed.
I just want to say that we did make a change. It's not the change you're looking for. I thought we did. And we passed a bill that allows municipalities to count mobile home units as affordable housing and can be applied to the goal of the ten percent of the municipal housing stuff. I thought we, that doesn't answer any of the questions.
I had a bill on this.
But we did do that. I, I, we did something.
That's what's, uh, immediate area that bill supported Tiverton and Little Compton.
In Middletown.
And Middletown.
And Middletown.
So we did do something. It doesn't address any of these issues, but I, I think I was crazy. I thought we did.
But then again, Brown Housing for years, years and years was against it. So I had the bill prior to Senator Progory retired. He had it because he was looking at it for the foster foster area where they have some of those. And at the end of the day, nothing comes with it that I'm aware of, other than the designation of, let's get ourselves higher on the ten percent. That's all. I haven't, I haven't seen the, the benefit of having gotten that.
Yeah, and it's very, that, this is a tough issue because municipalities have a lot of authority and when it comes down to doing that to municipality, if you get a fight amongst municipalities, I'm sure you all followed what happened in Johnston where they're not building. They stopped it. That was awful, you know? I mean, that's what we would be up against, right? All the folks in Johnston, so.
Anyone else on housing?
Just before we leave the housing piece, I was going to bring it up when we talk about workforce, but I'll bring it up here. We're planning most likely the end of February, the base building for March. Myself on the Senate and Chairman Joe Solomon of the House, there's been a Defense Economy Planning Commission at the state level that's been in existence for a couple decades now. And it got formed as the impetus from folks who remember the BRAC, the Base Realignment Enclosure of Two Thousand and Five Time, which was a big deal, big deal for the area. A concern for the area of what are we going to lose? And at the end of the day, we gained. Senator Jack Reed and company, we gained. What did we gain? They wanted to see Warfare Center in Newland, Colts. All those folks are still coming here. In fact, there's still people driving in a van every day to Newport to work here. Amongst other commands that came here, we lost a couple things, but we were net grown with Coast Guard coming in, with the NOAA coming in. The also, there's also concerns in light of what's happening, and I'm sure we're going to get to it next. What's happening at the federal level, not every hour of every day, but what's happening every minute of hour of every day. And it's going to, it's almost like, it's going to be like a whack a mole. We're trying to address what we need to do in the state from a budget perspective and policy perspective. The feds are coming down with something, it's like, where did that come from? Where did that come from? It could be, it could be a tweet. My phone's, my phone's on, but it's on silent. But, but it's the case where the Defense Economy Planning Commission, we're going to be looking at, the key emphasis is re- reenergizing that and it has a broad spectrum of representation. It's business, it's legislature, it's the Navy, et cetera. I can't name all the folks that are there because I shouldn't know all, the names have changed over time. And then one of the key things is what's our impetus going to be? Jobs, critical housing, number one. And the case, they need to be within fifteen, twenty minutes for some of the things, whether of housing, whether it's NOAA or whether it's the Coast Guard. There is building happening on Equine Island, if you drive up West Main Road right now, there'll be a hundred and fifty four, forty percent of those, of those units will be affordable. Various levels of affordable, right on West Main Road, where the, was the bus terminal? Was the skater line on there now? There was skater, now it's the boats in the back. That's happening now, something potentially happening in the back. So stuff's actually happening. We need more of it to happen, but it's the case where we need to ensure we're ready for the Coast Guard, for the Navy, for NOAA, for the people that are coming here, for the jobs that are here. Going back to workforce, how does that tie together? What do we need from a workforce perspective to support the hundred and twenty five million dollar investment, Senator Reed got a force for the NOAA, for all those kinds of things are going to come together. I think that will be a catalyst for seeking to address housing and workforce development issues. From the beginning point, it won't be the end.
And academic efforts, that they also weigh that as well in the discipline.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, next up, two dash eleven is securing state level support for immigrant families who may be targeted by ICE. Obviously, this has been in the news quite a bit lately. We do have a couple of questions, questions from the audience, so I'll start off by doing one of them. The new mandates from the new administration may affect a few benefits that immigrate, that immigrant families can access, cover all kids, free school meals, free extracurricular programs, et cetera. How is the state planning to mitigate these mandates?
So I first want to say that there has been a ton of chaos and confusion as a result of tweets, as a result of unconstitutional executive orders. And I want to applaud our Attorney General for his victory in court on Friday, putting a temporary restraining order on the funding freeze that the Trump administration was unlawfully trying to implement across a variety of programs. Um, I will say also that I have been following that conversation very closely along with a network of attorneys across this, the country in my private sector role. And there's going to be more to come on that. Um, and I think that, you know, continuing to make sure that we're doing that internal risk assessment as has been, you know, those two programs being identified kind of right off the bat. I think we need to be doing that internal risk assessment on our state and our local budgets to make sure that we're shoring up any sort of local funding that and philanthropic funding that we can to kind of support and boost our efforts. But what I will say is that the president is not Congress. He cannot unilaterally overturn an act of Congress. He cannot unilaterally dissolve federal agencies like the U.S. Department of Education, which, so there's a lot of chaos and a lot of confusion. Um, and I think that I'm very committed to making sure that we are appropriately pushing back, working with our federal delegation, working with our Attorney General, working with RYE to make sure that we are getting, continuing to get the funding that is due to us under these congressionally appropriated, like lawfully obligated funds. So that, I think, I can't say that strongly enough because I know that there's a lot of fear and there's a lot of confusion about it. That being said, I think that's the immediate is the defending ourselves against those attacks and making sure that we continue to, you know, flag stuff for us and flag stuff for the Attorney General's office. Because what I will say, there, there was a temporary restraining order issued on Friday um, around the cessation of funds and I anticipate that there will be ongoing litigation. Um, and I know that some of these programs live paycheck to paycheck. So if you're turning off the portal that the reimbursements are flowing through, that is a problem. Um, I've been talking to different state agencies to kind of get a sense as to where that is because not surprisingly, you know, they, the White House then corrected some of their tweets and some of their executive orders. Again, it's hard to tell if it's intentional chaos or just lack of understanding about how government funding works, like, or a little bit of both probably. Um, but the reality is that this is, this is going to be an, an evolving situation. Um, but those ones are obligated. And so this isn't a, um, so right now there is a litigation strategy led by our state Attorney General in partnership with twenty-two states that had a win on Friday and is going to continue to kind of shepherd through. So if you guys are seeing, especially the administration is seeing, you know, shutdowns on like funding portals and things like that, definitely make sure you're in communication with the AG's office. If you need me to help connect, I'm happy to do that. Like I said, in my private sector role, I'm like so in the weeds. I learn more about the Empoundment Act and Nixon's nonsense and Reagan's nonsense over the years than I ever thought that I would over the past two weeks. But, um, so I think that there's that initial thing that I think will get us through this budget year. Um, and then I think that it's going to be continued advocacy with our federal delegation to make sure that those federal programs continue to get funded at the level that we need them to get funded. Um, and I also think, you know, we've all started this meeting by talking about the state budget challenges, right? What it, I, I've heard estimates that like a third of our state budget is federal funding. So I think we need to have like a real hard look at ourselves about what we're, you know, what we're going to be doing in the next budget cycle and make sure, again, that we're advocating with our federal delegation, not just to push back against this initial chaos and overwhelm, but to continue in the outdoors, to make sure that funding flows. I mean, the funding for students with disabilities is like one of the programs that they're attacking right now. So, um, you know, we just need to continue to like advocate and make sure that that's, that's happening.
Anyone else?
One piece about the, just to tag on to Senator Ori's piece. When I heard about the piece, I've been waiting for several days on, back on Tuesday. I did get a call from our Executive Office of Health and Services to talk about that. So everything, so Medicare and Social Security off the table, that's over here. Everything else was on the table. Everything, everything was shut off. Everything. People say, well, they said at the federal level, and I watched, listened in horror and awe of some of the comments made by folks, so it's not going to affect people. Number one, let's get the message right. Let's get the message right. People are listening, they're watching, whether they believe or not, that's what they're hearing. So that's what they're going to believe. I'm sure of anybody, you're going to be scared with some of that. What does that mean? Folks in nursing homes, nursing homes aren't getting paid. Some of them have that pay. Folks on SNAP benefits, they're not getting that. Individuals with intellectual disabilities, the right, they think they live day to day, for which the state is accountable and delegates the responsibility to twenty-seven, thirty or so organizations across state with rest of two to three, four thousand people every year. Not getting paid. Went to Wednesday, we don't know. They took the portal down, can't even put your request in. Through Thursday, we think we're good. Still not there. Friday morning, we got our payment. What's our payment? Probably north of fifty, fifty, north of fifty million dollars. Our Medicaid costs in Rhode Island are the single number one cost in our state budget. Single number one. Education is very close to second behind them. But from a federal perspective, right now the governor proposed about fourteen billion dollar budget, not, excuse me, fifteen billion dollar budget. Federal funds is the highest number, five point six billion dollars. More than a third of the money's coming to the feds. So what happened over this last week, that we're talking about, we're talking about the state house and I've talked with the Senate President about and others about, we got to be ready every single day. Not to lay it to whack a mole, but another mole is going to pop its head up and we got to figure out, what do we do about it? Just going to continue, we're going to be ready for it. We got to make certain that we're not prepared. So what's going to happen? We don't know. But we are expecting more things to happen that are going to affect Rhode Islanders every day. So like I said, our most vulnerable population in the state were impacted by almost. Because most of these private organizations, nonprofits, don't have large entitlements and reserves funds that they can draw on. Some of them say, well, they should. Some have less than maybe a week, maybe two weeks. And we've seen that over the years of their operations. They don't, they don't make money. They don't make money on Medicaid. They're going to make more now, we're going to compensate, we're compensating them more now. But in light of all that, the last piece about our budget, you probably heard it was in north of three hundred something million dollars in structural deficit with their excess, or surpluses and other things and increased revenues and decreased caseloads, that's down to just north of two hundred something, two hundred million dollars, two hundred, two fifty. So that's what we're working towards addressing this year. So as things come up, going back to the necessary and nice to have, we're going to have to categorize, we're going to have to look at all those. Anything new is going to be really looked at under a microscope to say, we have to do it because.
I'm going to agree with both senators. I think that we're in for some serious conversations. The example that I agree with everything you've said. The one example, one example that I learned this week, I, I met with our state director of planning and she told me eighty percent of her staff are bedridden. Eighty. So that's an example of the impact of cutting back federal funds could have on Newport doing its land use management plan next year.
Anyone else? Well, there's a couple more questions, but they're all kind of related. What kind of financial resources can come from the state to support the work of nonprofits doing the work of protecting and supporting our immigrant families? I think you kind of already answered that, there's probably not much out there.
But there is one thing in regards to, we hadn't done in the past, the governor proposing this year with regards to workforce development, pretty much workforce development has been delegated to the for-profit side of the world. Governor proposed some money this year to look at how do we grow the workforce to the nonprofit side of the world. So that there is some workforce development money proposed. Will it survive?
Anyone else? All right, well, the last one up is Title sixteen teacher layoffs. This is something that we all know was coming. I'm not sure what we can really talk about it because we don't really, we don't really know what that.
Is there anybody here that put that question in? Yeah.
There's still a lot of unknowns out there as far as that's what I mean. Dr. Jemaine wants to take us on that subject.
It is the most difficult part and the worst part of any superintendent, any school community's job. Um, so Newport will have a very large number of layoffs this year. And through the community and through some of, you know, messaging, we have shared that one day we'll have even clearer messaging. But looking at the, um, tenured teachers, I think tenured teachers need to know you will be receiving layoff notices. And part of that is because if school districts do not notify a tenured teacher by March first and that teacher cannot be funded or called back, a district is responsible for funding, my understanding, step versus salary. The legislature was great about allowing us a June first date to help relieve the angst for just being, I'll say, prepared and laying off. But knowing that we didn't have to do it till June first and having a better understanding of what our revenues were and what our possible budget would be. So we would avoid laying off more people than absolutely necessary. This year we have a number of different, I'll just say, situations in which we need to not only do our layoffs, but we have to follow other procedures based upon some recent activities. But anyways, I just want the layoff, it is what it is to all our points. I don't know what we can do about it. I think it's only fair to our employees that we give them notification that there may not be funding going forward for certain positions. And we have been trying as a district because of our population and Senator DePalma and lawyer. You did mention that special ed, education is one of our largest costs. And just in a quick review, twenty-seven percent of our students at Pell are identified with an IEP. Twenty-six percent, almost twenty-five at Thompson. And as we know, most of the time those IP's are not going to go away, most of the time. So that is something the district has to be really, um, uh, clear about going forward in future expenses. And we do have a very diverse, wonderful population in which we need to make sure we have certified teachers and people in front of those children to make them be able to be successful. So it's going to be an interesting week here, but the angst it causes. So we're in February, so we have February, March, April and May until we can get a better understanding of what our revenues are. And I understand you don't have control about that. But that is something I believe the chair brought up from the beginning. And when you think about private industry and you think about other ways in which organizations are funded, no one or no other organization finds out a week before its new financial year begins what their final dollars are going to be. It's not fair to the community, it's not fair to the employees, staff, most of all. But again, that's a bigger thing. And that's why I have, and I start to say, the way we thought probably education is broken. And we really need to think hard on how we can, and it's not going to happen in one year, but we need to think going forward, how can we help fix this? Because the city has evolved as well because they can't tell us what they're going to give us until they know their numbers better. So it's just a, it, I think it's a calendar thing. And I got to talk to more Sandy in East Providence. East Providence, I believe, is the only district that starts its fiscal year. Right, October first, it follows the government. And I'm wondering, I don't know if anyone's ever explored that, looking at when and how we fund our schools or when and how we set our calendars for budgeting so that everything is better aligned and that we have time so that you don't have to do these massive layoffs and disrupt your staff, et cetera. We're in a district that we really have to focus on the, think about it, we have to focus about our classroom instruction, our day to day work, and the people that we need and value the most are going to be receiving layoff notices. and the people that we need and value the most are gonna be receiving layoff notices. So, just in general, that really does something to one's morale and the unpredictability of the future, so.
Just a couple of pieces on the special ed. So, last year, as part of the, currently, right now, the budget year we're in now, for high-cost special ed, right? High-cost special ed, state, as a pool?
Right, would you, yes, would you explain what that is? Because I don't think a lot of people understand what that is.
Sure, so high-cost special ed is, what we consider to be high-cost special ed, previously was five times, take the core value of student success factor, add that together, let's assume it's fifteen thousand dollars, give this number here, it's not. Five times that is seventy-five thousand dollars. Any cost over the seventy-five thousand dollars, the state would say, okay, we're gonna pick up some of them. There was a pool created, and based on how much was there, it got divvied out percentage-wise to how much you had and checks were handed out for that difference. Some students cost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, some are two hundred thousand dollars. High-cost special ed can be very expensive, and it's needed. For those children that get it, it's categorical, but you do. Last year, we changed that and moved it down to four percent, four times. So, instead of seventy-five thousand, for the numbers we're using here, it would came to sixty thousand. So, anything over sixty thousand would be paid, would be a possibility to be paid for by state funds within the pool money that's been allocated. Not all of it, but the pool money's been allocated. We've had discussions in the bills over the years to bring that down to one. I know I've had it. To bring that down to, any cost higher than the fifteen thousand, let's say, for this number here, we should pick up as a state. I know what I, I just think, at the end of the day, and why is that so much of an issue? Sitting on education for sixteen years, and I'll just say, here are the horror stories. There are horror stories out there of families, of children with IEPs going to school committee meetings, or not school committees, going to school meetings, not school...
IEP meetings.
We value what school committee do. But no, we value what everybody does. Going to these meetings, parents sitting in front of tens of people. Some of these people, in fact, were members of the school committee, their child. One of the people was, in fact, a teacher. And they all live on Quinton Island, the name, the public, I'm not gonna give you the names here, but the names are out there. They fought with their school district to get the funding for their child. This is, the public's on the school committee, so, and you're one of the seven, you have a child in the district, you're fighting with your school department to get the funding you need for your child. Somebody else is a teacher in one of the school districts, in the school district that they're, where they live and where the issue is, and they're fighting for that. There are categorically students out there that are not getting the services they need, categorically. We heard it, gonna name them? No, I have some names written down about it. We need to figure out, if we can help address those special ed costs, if we took those off the table, you're likely to be alive, in our perspective. We have to figure out how you lower your property tax. There's gotta be, gotta be, can't be a zero-sum game here, right? It's gotta be something where something's being taken away, the city residents aren't paying for something else that's there. I think we need to figure out how to continue to move there. How we do that, we're gonna say, "Well, you just said you have no money." You're right, we don't. We gotta figure out how we get there, because at the end of the day, if that child's not getting the services they need, they're not, they're gonna, it's gonna continue. They're gonna fight, they're gonna take it to court, it happened to, with somebody who was a General Assembly member, whose child didn't get the services they need. RYE said to the district, "Go do it." The district said, "See you later." RYE said to the district, "Don't do it." The district said, "See you later." Took it to federal court, the federal judge said, "You don't want me to decide it here." They ultimately awarded the family a hundred and forty thousand dollars, their daughter didn't get services for two years, thirteen years. Who was, who was lost at that? The child. And this is a state rep now, not that anybody should have any sway in anything, but it's happening out there. So, special ed is a significant cost.
Mr. Vance has a question.
This is for my own clarification, because maybe I just, I'm not understanding. So, there's this large pool of funds that goes to high-cost special ed services, right? Out of district, medical, all those things. And the criteria used to be five times to access those funds, right? And so, now we've dropped that criteria down to four and potentially to one.
Well, I'd like to get it to one.
So, four. So, now, there's a larger number of people that can, you know, access that pool of funds. Has that pool of funds grown to meet that newer need?
I can't say categorically it has or it hasn't, but that's the other part that, it's, it hasn't. I don't think it has, I'll verify it. Sometimes what's, what's done is, if you have more in your district, you're gonna get more pieces that pie. But the other piece I wanna say, going back to your piece, because the first bill that took me six years to pass was moving the teacher notification date from March first to June first. So, and I know it's an issue of, if a teacher's terminated for cause, that had to be by March first, otherwise it saves another whole year after that for something. What we put in there, nowhere, as in like five or six places, I can almost see the paragraphs in Title sixteen. Fiscal exigency was the words that were specifically used with regards to whether they need to get a notice or not. Because I think that noticing the notice out now is just ridiculous. Especially when you, like, you don't know the budget. And going back to East Providence, we always look at them as an outlier, it's like, why can't you be like everybody else? Because every bill that we, budgeting we do is like, well, okay, they're later, we gotta recalculate something different over here. It's just different when they're in October as opposed to now, and what they do and what they don't do. I've just been seeing that language, though. Is it, is it in fact, because it was, I remember the specific, there were languages in there for tenured teachers, and they're there, right, they're, they're tenured, we want them to be tenured, right? They've been around for, and the value they provide to many districts, the students. But I thought there was something different for fiscal exigency.
In some districts, there may be other, I'll just say, agreements going on that may prohibit that from happening, but I will go back to the tenured teacher. The, I agree with you that sending them out now is not great timing, nor does anyone wanna do it.
No, you got to...
The other side of it is, though, if you don't have the funding, then you have to pay the salary that you may not have, and that's where the challenge comes.
So, is it, is that expected, is, I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm always a firm believer, I'm gonna trust, but verify.
Right.
Is that common knowledge across all school districts, also all superintendents and lawyers?
Most of us, yes, because I was exploring it, and I did talk to my other, my fellow, and they do the same thing, but...
If it's tenured, tenured, tenured are the criterias, is it?
Yeah, they lay off what they have to do according to their contracts and what they do. The other side of it is, as one of the, the superintendent shared, sometimes it depends upon the lawyer. The lawyer might tell you one thing, but at the end of the day, as...
Ask another lawyer.
I know. At the end of the day, as the superintendent, and we don't have the funding, and I've got five people over here that we have to pay a salary, I don't think my board's gonna be very happy about that.
I, I gotta, who do you have to look at, what's, what's there? You have to do what you have to do, but it's the case where the impact that that has on the teacher, the students, the family, is just... Especially when the mayor's, he's gonna get his checkbook out here in a minute and figure it out.
Dr. Paul, you have a quick question, and then we'll go wrap it up.
Well, it's not a question, two concepts. One would be looking at statewide salaries as opposed to individual districts. And I say that because oftentimes, you know, we lose teachers sometimes because they're gonna get paid differently in other districts. I understand people who start their career here and they live in Cranston, and when they get an opportunity to go to Cranston, they go to Cranston. Some people leave here because they're gonna get paid better in another location. We take the time to grow the teachers and to put them through training programs, and then they leave because somebody can outbid us, because we have separate contracts in all the different districts.
I actually think we have one of the highest retention rates for teachers. Because we're almost, because we adjusted, we adjusted the salary, we, I say, the school department, adjusted salaries, given the high cost of living here, in an effort to try to keep teachers local.
So, we don't lose them here?
No, we did a market analysis for this last month, and that was part of our...
Forget it. I'll give the other one.
We can't guess.
Here's the bigger head. You know, we're a small state, so if we were to look at the Department of Education, and we purchased that service from Massachusetts, didn't have to run a Department of Education, would we save money on that, and would that be a competitor for us to go with all the success that we've had up here?
We'll leave on that note.
So, we're like regionalization but on steroids.
Well, they've been successful, things have happened up there, we're a small state, we run this department. I mean, maybe it's because we have control over that, and we said we don't wanna do that, but on the other hand, you know, we're small, and, you know, I'm just...
Sure, but one of the big...
Small state, but we have a, a, you're saying, what's that guy called?
We have all these...
State, I was with the...
We have all the cities and towns, I got that, and they all have their own thing. I've been here all my life so far, I got that part of it, but I just...
Just wanna fall back to, just, I wanna correct what the superintendent, I meant what she said. So, many folks will remember, may be rest in peace, Paul Prowler, right? I'll also remember Mike Prowler. Mike Prowler, when the, I think I was on the council at the time, little town, the formula came into place, the one that we have, right at, no, I was in the, I was in General Assembly at the time, Commissioner Gifford here. Prior to that, if we think what we have now is broken, then I don't know what we had before. Because what we had before was, you'd get to the, Marvin and I would be doing negotiations fast forward, and we'd get the budget done, and you'd find out, oh, that one percent you thought you were gonna get is two percent now. You thought it was candy, falling from the sky, right? Because that was the, that was the education year, you get one percent more than you had last year. Then maybe if revenues are better in May, then we got two percent a couple of times. We have a formula now. And Mike Prowler, remember, Mike Prowler, may be rest in peace, said, "Be careful what you ask for, because once the formula went in place, it was based on students' seats," right? And so, very quickly, your budget was here before, but your student population kept going in one of these. So, we have a formula now. It's not perfect, but if, what we have now is broken, we didn't have anything before. So, we have a broken formula, before we didn't have the formula.
Tweaking is a good thing, though, we have to keep evolving, right?
I have a quick, quick, I got a letter this morning from one of our constituents who asked me to ask this question, so I wanna eat up with this gentleman. He asked that if the opportunity presents itself, would you ask the school committee, should they, and the school building committee, should they attend, to provide a comprehensive presentation on the plans for the Rogers from the building completion to project completion at some date in the future? That is what this gentleman has asked, I said I would ask, and so...
A public meeting that we can...
I think that's what he's looking for.
Get everybody up to speed on where we are.
I think that's what he's looking for. I agree. So, I, I asked.
Well, I mean, obviously, we could, we can do that, but, you know, he's also welcome to join our SBC meeting. Those meetings are very formulaic, I think we need a more generic meeting to explain things.
So, I'm just telling you what he asked for.
Could you say, have a presentation first?
Yeah, that would be great. And on that note about meetings, thank you very much for being here today, and I think we can do this maybe one more time before the session's over. What do you think?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you everyone, everyone for coming. And before we go, I just wanna recognize, I just wanna recognize our mayors here, John Boulder, and our manager Colin Kennedy sitting in the back. Yeah, I think this was, oh, Tracy Westman is our elementary school principal, and we already heard from Jared Vance, who's...
And Director of Teaching and Learning. Have it all.
Supersides here. Oh, Eddie Seager.
Yeah, thank you really much, very much for coming. We'll get this video up online and I'll share it with everybody. Conversations are how we...
Do we have a motion to adjourn? Second, all of us in favor, I...